Yeah. So, thank you, everybody, for waiting right now. Good evening and welcome, everybody. Welcome to the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education, May 13th, 2020, special meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're continuing to work collaboratively and focus on our students as we carry out and improve the distance learning educational opportunities and support for our students. I would like to thank our employees, families, and the entire West Contra Costa Unified School District community for how you have continued to support each other during this crisis to ensure our kids are safe and healthy while continuing to access their public education and daily meals. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. I would like to start with some basic instructions regarding how we are going to be using Zoom today and involving members of the public. All board members and the superintendent will be on video throughout the board meeting. Staff members are also present and will be on video. Members of the public will not be on video and will be muted throughout the meeting. In an attempt to maximize participation and adhere to our values of respect and safety for the community, we are trying a new way to receive public comment for tonight's meeting. Staff will assess this after every meeting and bring forward any necessary changes. In order to comment on an agenda item at tonight's meeting, we ask board members, we ask members, I'm sorry, we ask members of the public to submit their comments to board comments@wccusd.net. That's B-O-A-R-D-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@wccusd.net or via the board comment form. The link to the form is available on the board agenda. Para hacer un comentario sobre un artículo en la agenda, se le pide al público que por favor mande sus comentarios a la dirección de correo electrónico boardcomment@wccusd.net. That is, eso es B-O-A-R-D-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@wccusd.net. O por el formulario de comentarios de la mesa directiva. El enlace a este formulario está disponible en la agenda de la mesa directiva. When we get to the item, a member of district staff will read your comment. Comments will be restricted to the amount of time allocated by board policy. Public comments need to be submitted before the first public comment is read on an agenda item. After the first comment is read, there will be no additional public comments accepted for reading. It will be submitted to the board and staff. Thank you. Do we have any public comments submitted for closed session items, Mr. Walton?
Yes, there are 11 public comment items for closed session items.
Okay, so that will be two minutes each.
Okay. Give me one moment to get back to the beginning.
Thank you.
The first public, excuse me, sorry. The first public comment is from Jennifer Keaton. Ms. Keaton's comment is, "Hi, I was just informed that it's been decided by the board to vote on a replacement principal for Lupine Hills Elementary during closed session. That is ridiculous and uncalled for. The parents and staff should have input on the next leader of their school since no one wanted to listen to everyone's support of Dr. Merza. It really truly makes no sense. Obviously, it is not at the best interest of the staff, parents, or children of Lupine Hills. This is very disturbing to me, especially when the board is why there's a problem with the district being in a deficit anyway. Very unprofessional, very disappointing. Dr. Merza was and is the best choice for Lupine Hills. If that weren't true, why wouldn't you let us vote on the next principal? You probably already have your chosen one anyway." The next public comment is from Charmaine Verres. And Ms. Verres' comment is, "My comment is regarding the termination of Dr. Merza, Principal of Lupine Hills Elementary School, and appointment of a replacement principal." One moment, sorry. "I am the grandparent of kindergarten student Natalie Verres entering first grade next year. I was responsible for drop-off and pickup last year, so I did interact with Dr. Merza on a daily basis. I observed a principal that knew each and every child's name and many of the parents as well. She was actively out interacting with all during the start of school, often directing car drop-off traffic as well as directing kids moving into class. She dressed for each holiday as well and was the heart of the school spirit. I personally had to work to keep our kids out of Dr. Merza's office since it started to seem like our little one was faking sickness or injury in order to spend some time, some special time with Dr. Merza, getting a toy or being read a book. I have not witnessed a more engaged and beloved principal during my school career, during my school career, as well as that of both my daughters going through both public and private schools. I understand that Lupine Hills had a very broken system prior to Dr. Merza joining the school per the public ratings, and that has been the exact opposite of our experience. I cannot imagine a more effective principal that certainly was doing everything right, and it definitely showed. Why on earth would the school board now see fit to remove someone so effective that was single-handedly turning around the school?" The next public comment comes from Andrea Walker. Ms. Walker's comment is, "My son has attended Lupine Hills for four years. He already had, he has already had two principals, one too many. We transferred from Rodeo Hills for a better education. I questioned our decision in the beginning, but since Dr. Merza took over, he's thrived. Dr. Merza is amazing. Can you tell me that a new principal will know which fourth-grade teacher is best for my son? I trust her with him. She cares about the kids. She puts them first above all else. Do you?" The next public comment comes from... I'm sorry, that is a repeat public comment. The next public comment is from Darlene Españo. And she writes, "Dr. Merza has made leaps and brown, has made leaps and bounds with the school even during this SIP. She continued, please shelter in place. She continually does storytelling with the students and even initiated a teacher's parade to ensure that the students don't feel alone. My son goes to Aloney now because I felt under Ms. Best that Lupine was the worst out of the three in the city. However, as soon as Dr. Merza came along, I wondered if I had made a mistake. Dr. Merza goes up and beyond for her students more so than the Aloney principal and maybe even the Hannah Ranch principal. Her presence is always seen on campus. She even taught the TK class sign language. If that shows poor performance, then I don't know what criteria you use because Ms. Best was not the best. Please consider saving Dr. Merza." The next public comment comes from Nathan Miller. Miller, and he writes, "Keep Dr. Merza, do not fire her. She has been the best thing that happened to Lupine Elementary for a long time. She has been supportive of our students and parents. She has worked hard to start after-school programs, and she has been instrumental in holding our school together during the COVID-19 crisis. Letting her go would be a big mistake." The next person is Joan Davina Garcia. "I am not in favor of replacing Dr. Merza, Principal of Lupine Hills Elementary. I have three kids currently enrolled at the school, and she has done an amazing job as a principal." The next one is from Christopher Moore. His comment is, "Do not replace our principal, Dr. Merza, at Lupine Hills Elementary. She is magnificent, and you, the board, will be doing the school and our local community a crippling injustice by institutionalizing her out for ill reasons." The next public comment is from Kanda Asanui. Asan. Asani Wutekam. Asanui Wutekam. And that comment reads, "Please save our principal, Dr. Merza, for Lupine Hills Elementary. Since she started, I have seen significant improvement to school programs and activities never seen before since our daughter attended this school four years ago. Dr. Merza did a fantastic job making the school more fun and interesting for my kid. Please keep her with us." Next is from Sabrina Baines. "I am a parent of kids attending Lupine Hills Elementary in Hercules. I am extremely distraught to learn that WCCUSD is letting go of such a wonderful principal, Dr. Merza. She has been such a great asset to our school, a strong leader, and an amazing advocate for our kids. Please do not let her go. This will be a terrible mistake. I don't feel anyone else can do, can do a job as great as her. The kids love her, the parents love her, the staff loves her. What more could you want? It is sad that so many are pleading to keep her at the school, and the board is trying to get rid of her. Please think of the kids in this school. Please help our school get out of the low end. We want our kids to succeed in school with her guidance and hard work. Thank you." Next is from Vanessa Corcuchia. "Please save our principal, Dr. Merza. She has done a lot for just a year being at the school. We need a permanent principal. We don't need someone new every year who will not get things done." The next is from Andrea Walker. "I am submitting this comment to replace my previous..." "The West Contra Costa Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5. It states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Uniform School Board, Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss the community with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis silently passed his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School, School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the process to select a new principal that will be, that will include the promised staff and parent involvement." And that concludes public comment on item A3.
Thank you, Mr. Walton, and thank you to members of the public from the Lupine Hills community for communicating their concerns to us. Mr. Duffy, could you please just follow up with, with the board on how we can address this? So, I know that this is something that has come up before, and I think that you have followed up, so I just want us to make sure that we stay in the loop and we continue that communication.
Yes.
Thank you. So, with no more further public comment, it is now time to recess into our closed session. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education, May 13th, 2020, special meeting. I would like to begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. We continue to work collaboratively and focus on our students. We continue to improve our distance learning educational opportunities and support our students. I would like to thank our employees, families, and the entire WCCUSD community for how you have continued to support each other during the crisis to ensure our kids are safe and healthy while continuing to access their public education and daily meals. Thank you so much for all your work. I would like to begin with a few basic instructions regarding how we are going to be using Zoom today and involving members of the public. All members of this, all board members and the superintendent will be on video throughout the board meeting. Staff members are also present and will be on video. Members of the public will not be on video and will be muted throughout the meeting. In an attempt to maximize participation and adhere to our values of respect and safety for the community, we are trying a new way to receive public comment for tonight's meeting. Staff will assess this after each meeting and bring forward any necessary changes. In order to comment on an agenda item at tonight's meeting, we ask members of the, submit their comments to boardcomment@wccusd.net. That is B-O-A-R-D-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@wccusd.net or via the board comment form. The link to the form is available on the board agenda. I'm gonna repeat this in Spanish. Para hacer un comentario sobre un artículo en la agenda, se le pide al público que por favor mande sus comentarios a la dirección de correo electrónico boardcomment@wccusd.net. O por el formulario de comentarios de la mesa directiva. El enlace a este formulario está disponible en la agenda de la mesa directiva. When we get to the item, a member of the district, of the district or staff will read your comment. Comments will be restricted to the amount of time allocated by board policy. Public comments need to be submitted before the first public comment is read on an agenda item. After the first comment is read, there will be no additional public comments accepted for reading. It will be submitted to the board and staff. Again, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Can we please have the roll call? Mr. Duffy or Ms. Haney?
Sorry, I was on mute.
Thank you.
President Hernandez Jarvis?
Present.
Trustee Laura?
Present.
Trustee Paddis?
Present.
Trustee Phillips? Trustee Cuevas?
And our student trustees?
I'm here, Dawit.
Thank you, student trustee Dawit. And student trustee Carson Rydel is not at the meeting with us today? Thank you. Thank you for roll call. Superintendent Duffy, do we have reported a closed session?
We do not.
Thank you. That leads us to our consent items. Item C1, routine personnel changes, certified and unclassified. And we have Ms. Williams in the meeting currently, right? So, Brendan Duffy?
Yeah. These are, these are consent items that are on the routine personnel changes for both classified and certificated items that were discussed last week.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment for C1?
Yes, President Hernandez Jarvis, we have 36 public comments signed up.
Thank you. So, that would give us one minute per comment. Thank you, Mr. Walton.
You're, you're very welcome, and I will point out that several of the commenters have decided to cut and paste the exact same comment, so there will be several, the same comment repeated several times.
Understood. Thank you.
The first public comment comes from Matthew Horton. "I'm here once more to strongly urge the board to reconsider their actions enforcing the resignation of our Lupine Hills Principal, Dr. Merza. Our PTA, parents, and children are united against this action, and will be organizing our efforts against the board in the upcoming elections in November if you continue this course of action. The best option for our school, our children, and our school should be the easiest one for you. Instead of hiring an unknown, unproven new principal and forcing our families to once again start over in our work to make our school one we can be proud of, please let us keep our existing leadership. The unbelievable silence for most of the board on this matter and your willingness to ignore the needs of your constituents on this is crazy. With all that is happening right now, the last thing we need is more instability. Do the right thing and allow Dr. Mercy to rescind what is effectively a coerced resignation, and let us keep working with the most effective leader we've had." The next comment is from TJ Warfield. "Please do not vote a new principal in for our school. There's been no attempt to involve parents or teachers in the selection of the new principal. We are in the middle of a crisis. This is not the time to make such, such changes. Please take the time to engage with the community before voting on this issue. In addition, we, the behavior, Executive Director Marco Gonzalez throughout this process should be investigated. We have hundreds of school community members, including students, teachers, staff, and community members supporting our current principal, yet no formal evaluation has been done." The next comments from Ray Rivera. "We want to keep Dr. Merza as our principal in Lupine, in Lupine Hills Elementary School." Next is from Darlene Españo. This one's a cut-and-paste news release. #SaveMyPrincipal for immediate release, May 12, 2020. Contacts Rose McGeehan, PTA President, PTA Lupine Hills, at gmail.com. Parents rally in West Contra Costa to save beloved principal from being pushed out by school district administrator amidst COVID-19 crisis. West Contra Costa, in the midst of the COVID-19 crisis, over 300 parents were stunned by the news that their beloved principal, Dr. Samia Merza, at Lupine Hills Elementary, might suddenly be leaving the school. This news came as a shock to staff, parents, and community members because Principal Dr. Merza has dramatically improved Lupine Hills Elementary and involved teachers, parents, school staff, and community members in ways many have never been involved before. Quote, "Dr. Merza has created a warm and friendly learning environment. For the first time in my 10 years in Lupine Hills School, she has implemented many after-school programs. The students look forward to and enjoy these programs that Dr. Merza created," says School Secretary Lisa Obasi. Principal Dr. Merza also wants to stay at Lupine Hills Elementary but was forced into a false resignation by school district administrator Marco Gonzalez. Principal Dr. Merza's resignation sparked such widespread disbelief and objection amongst the school community that it became clear Gonzalez's actions in pushing out Principal Dr. Merza was not inclusive of parents, teachers, school staff, or the community. Principal Dr. Merza rescinded her resignation, and over the last two months, parents, staff, and community members have continuously contacted school district representatives and school board members to vocalize their support to keep Principal Dr. Merza. TJ Warfield, a parent of a Lupine Hills Elementary student, is frustrated with how parents have been ignored, discounted, and excluded from this process. The next public comment is by Dr. Guerrero. It's from Dr. Guerrero.
Yes, I'm sorry. My apologies. I was on mute. I, so this is a message from Nofar Biran, and he reads, "I am submitting this comment to replace my previous comment for this board meeting. The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code 35145.5. It states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the West, I mean, to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary's Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board elects..."
Time is up.
Okay, thank you. The next comment is by Priscilla Marabuto. "My son has attended Lupine Hills Elementary since kindergarten. I would like to say he is a great student, very good, great point average, on the overall and pretty consistent. I just recently heard about the principal resigning, the rescinding, and the meeting that have been going on, as well as all information found on Facebook. Not that my comments will make a difference of being principal, I have a higher expectation of her. Rather, I was very disappointed in how she handled a situation that occurred with my son in February of this year. As a result, my 10-year-old, the fourth grader, was involved in a one-time incident where he was accused, and the consequences would appear to be a threat, where Dr. Merza, during a phone call, told me my son was going to be suspended for a day or have a one-day-in-school suspension or wouldn't be able to attend a field trip, or if attended the field trip, would not be able to go to the gift shop and sit on a bench. Because the field trip was the next day, I made a decision to not let him attend the field trip. At that point, an hour later, Dr. Merza confirmed my, my son would be on a one-day-in-school suspension, which she completed. I did respond to that, through Merza via email, and CC Marco Gonzalez, as I was disappointed on how the matter was handled." Thank you.
The next comment is from Claire DeWhite. "I am one of many concerned parents of children at Lupine Hills Elementary. I have been hearing very worrying news regarding our much-adored principal, Dr. Merza. She is the best thing that has happened to the school, and I am constantly impressed by her dedication to our students and their overall experience at school. She is engaged and committed to leading our school to success, even now given current events. It would be quite a blow for us to have to be issued a new principal again. Please think of the children and families who have been at this elementary in recent years and have had so much turnover in leadership. Please provide us with the stability our kids deserve by leaving Miss Dr. Merza as principal for the 2021 academic year. Thank you." The next comment is from Sarah Maxwell. It is a cut-and-paste. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code 35145. It states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly on, related to the school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa Unified School District Board meeting to discuss the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example of demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the schools or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve the new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added." The next comment is Marcus to read.
I can read it. It's from Eldar Dobrin, and it's also a cut-and-paste. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5. It states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a simple example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the schools or, or students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's..." Thank you.
I have the next one from Arlito Rivera. "I am not in favor of replacing Dr. Merza, Principal of Lupine Hills Elementary. I have three grandkids currently enrolled at the school, and she's done an amazing job as principal." The next public comments from Chita Rivera. "I am not in favor of replacing Dr. Merza, Principal of Lupine Hills Elementary. It seems to be, I have three grandkids currently enrolled at the school, and she has done an amazing job as principal."
The next comment is from Evelyn Prosser. It is the exact same cut-and-paste again regarding the education code. There's no words changed from the previous comments. The next comment is from Angela Rizik Jackson. This also is an exact cut-and-paste with no comment changes whatsoever from the previous post regarding the ed code.
Dr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Walton, since these are public comments that the public did submit as their comment, I think that we should allot the one minute to read those aloud.
Absolutely.
For the sake of democratically acknowledging and receiving the comments.
Okay.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Certainly. So, Evelyn Prosser's, "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code 35145.5. It states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore the public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding..." And is that the next comment? It is from... To the next comment, it is from James Prosser. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the process..." Time is up. ...principal.
Yes, the next comment is from Angela Riz Jackson. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified Board meeting for the board to discuss with the, uh, community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our current students without community involvement. Also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and, uh, parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny..." Thank you.
The next comment is from Shannon Blackman. "The West Contra County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next Contra Costa County Unified School, this school board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary's Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next..." Time is up. The next comment is from Han Tran. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board..." Time is up.
Yes, the next comment is by Vaughn Carpio. "In 14 years, I've had three daughters attend Lupine for TK and Kinder. This year, I've been, I've noticed that my youngest daughter was always very excited to go to school, and even with the distance learning in place. Kayla was very eager to attend her after-school reading program. Dr. Merza was always involved and promptly responds to all my email inquiries. I see how the kids react to Dr. Merza with care, joy, and excitement in their voices during their Zoom meetings. I hope that you consider your decision and that Dr. Merza stay, as she can help build a good future curricular foundation relationship for Lupine Elementary and the students. Sincerely, Mr. and Mrs. Carpio."
The next comment is from Damian Maxwell. "The West Contra County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to..." The next comments from Rose McGeehan. "Dear trustees, you all have run on a platform of community support and advancement in the education and lives of our children. I've watched you campaign and commit to enacting change for our district to improve the quality of our schools and the standards. We would not, we would want not only for your own children, but for the communities you represent. To have a public outcry of support for an elementary school principal is not one that you should dismiss. We've had multiple principals in turnover at Lupine, but none has really demonstrated the empathy or leadership than that of Dr. Merza. By now, you're all aware of the programs and support she's brought to the school, but on top of that, she's also proven results. Academic scores in both math and reading have gone up more so than we've had for years. She's been fiscally responsible by getting grants to support STEM programs and help fundraise for supplies and assemblies rather than leverage SSC funds. I'm sure many of you believe that this is a passing storm and vote to replace her with some administrative lead who has seniority, but I can assure you that the community supports her, and we will not let this go. We need to raise our schools to better standard, and those of us in Hercules who attend Lupine are tired of having our voices neglected and consistently overlooked. Consider this request and what..." Time is up. "...to community and children."
The next comment is from Claire De White. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing boards. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. Also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without, uh, promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of forced resignation..."
Time is up.
"...I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School, this, school board meeting."
The next comment is from Veronica Del Toro. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next board meeting..." Time is up. The next comment is from Hugo Hernandez. "The West Contra Costa Unified School, West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example of demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the process..." Time is up. ...principal.
The next comment is for Maria Hernandez. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby, uh, formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary's Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous comments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. Also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement."
The next comment is from Antonio Hernandez. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code 35145 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board proceeds to ignore public outcry and deny Principal Merza's rescinding of her forced resignation, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa Unified School Board meeting..." The next comment is from Benjamin Gutierrez. "I am highly recommend, I am highly recommend that Dr. Merza stay, recommending that Dr. Merza stay as the principal at Lupine Elementary School. I had three of my children graduate from Lupine, and I have had, have two others attend ending, and one in a few years. I have not seen or experienced a better person to lead the school than Dr. Merza. My vote as a citizen of CCC for over 20 years has always been what is best for the community. I and along with my family, and I, my families have spoken to, agreed that Dr. Merza should be our leader at Lupine Elementary School. Thank you for considering my voice."
The next comment is by Mary Baldisan. "The West Contra, the West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of, of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary's Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our, or students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement. If the board..."
Time is up. The next comment is from Tani Sukka Navarro. "Dr. Merza has been the best principal at Lupine for the past years. She has started many wonderful programs at the school, and it is not fair to the students that another person will come to the school." The next comment is from Jennifer English. "Dr. Merza, principal at Lupine Hills, was told to resign. She tried to rescind her resignation. She was, she has only been a positive influence at Lupine Hills. She has been supportive of teachers, parents, students, and the community. She has created a school where students and teachers want to come every day. Teachers and families were not given a chance to fight to keep their principal. As a teacher at Lupine Hills, it doesn't make any sense to replace our current principal when we all want her to stay. She has done so much for the school in the short time she has been here. Lupine Hills has been through so many principals over the past 10 years, and we finally have one that wants to stay, and he wants to make a difference in our students' lives. Lupine needs stability and strong leadership. We have that with Dr. Merza. Please keep Dr. Merza at Lupine Hills. Thank you." Next is from Harpreet Sidhu. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Section 35145.5 that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary's Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. We sincerely request that this be reversed and allow, and allow Dr. Merza to remain at our school, not only for our children who have benefited immensely from her leadership and dedication, but also for our community whom she has provided a sense of school spirit that we didn't have before."
The next comment is from Jennifer Keaton. "The West Contra Costa County Unified School Board has been in violation of Education Code Sections 35145.6, point five, that states, 'It is the intent of the legislature that members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school district business on the agenda of school district governing board meetings. I, I hereby formally request that a public agenda item be added to the next West Contra Costa County Unified School Board meeting for the board to discuss with the community the following: The unethical forced resignation of Lupine Hills Elementary's Principal Merza by District Local Administrator Marco Gonzalez. Gonzalez's, Gonzalez's actions to take advantage of the COVID crisis to silently pass his own agenda is just a single example demonstrating his abuse of power by utterly ignoring previous commitments to stop principal turnover and not make decisions regarding the school or our students without community involvement. I also formally request that no vote be made to approve a new principal for Lupine Hills Elementary without promised Lupine Hills staff and parent involvement."
Time is up. The next comment is from Michelle Masiki. "Replacing or removing Dr. Merza would be a huge loss for the school system and Lupine Hills Elementary. My son joined the Lupine Hills family in the late fall, so I have had a limited time to get to know Dr. Merza is all about. In that time, I have seen immense enthusiasm, dedication, creativeness, and a true compassion for her students that I have not seen in any of my prior principals my son has had. She organized events when the school was physically in session, joined periodic class meetings, now that the system is remote, and even does a nightly reading for the students. Don't let her go. We will not easily find someone who is so dedicated, and this is crucial for success." The next public comment is from, is from Michelle Keaton. "It is unbelievable to me that the district would cheat parents out of such an amazing principal. This will be the third leadership change in its many years, and how do you think that affects our children? Not well. Dr. Merza has been a gift to the school and our children. Not only does she spend her own money to make sure things, that things happen, but she goes above and beyond to ensure that our children are learning and gaining as much from their experience at the school as possible. It's rare to find someone as, as interested in the future as she is. Shame on the district, and shame on anyone involved in trying to take away one of the few people who is genuinely interested in providing our children with a thorough education and expanding their minds. Maybe the people making these decisions..." these decisions should be the ones giving up their positions since they could care less about what happens to our schools for our children. If Dr. Merza is not retained by the district, I hope that your rights, your nights are filled with restless sleep due to what you've stolen from us parents and our children.
The next comment is from Myleen Mangalindan. My fifth grade son has been at Lupine Hills since kindergarten. Dr. Merza is his third principal and by far the most investment invested in the students. She knows the children by name and engages with them regularly. She regularly communicates with the parents. Many school clubs and events were started this school year. We have a student council for the first time this school year. The kids are so much happier. I am very disappointed in the WCCUSD board for not even consulting with the parents or staff before making this decision. An excellent principal is not easily replaceable. A school district board member is. Please remember if, that if you still want to screw over this 300-plus students, we will remember your names.
The next comment is from Joyce Nguyen. Our family wants to keep Dr. Merza as principal at Lupine Hills Elementary School. Dr. Merza is the most amazing principal our family has ever seen. She always listened to the parents and students' comments. A few months after Dr. Merza joined Lupine Hills, she has already started Reading Academy, math session, and hosting a coding night at the school. These are the programs our family is waiting and hoping for in school. Dr. Merza hosted these programs in her own time. We are impressed by her passion of teaching students and enthusiastic. Lupine Hills School really needs Dr. Merza.
The next is from Hard Gender Paul Situ. Dr. Merza is doing an awesome job. She is a great principal. Humble request to the board members, please let her stay because Lupine Hills Elementary needs her, a dedicated leader who is giving the best educational experience to students. And the final comment is from Jen Benaro. Please keep our school principal, Dr. Merza. She continues to make Lupine Hills Elementary a better school. The students and staff, school staff need her. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, and thank you, Dr. Wold and Dr. Guerrero for reading the comments, and thank you to each member of the public and the Lupine Hills School Community who shared their comments with us tonight. Mr. Duffy, I would like to just direct you to continue to follow up with them and to communicate via message with the Lupine Hills School Community tomorrow. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, it is now time for us to consider this item that we have at hand, the personnel changes for certified and classified. If any of you have any comments before we get started with making a motion, I would like to, to have those comments now, beginning with our student trustee, and then continuing with trustee Leta, trustee Phillips, trustee Cuevas, trustee Panas, and then myself. Thank you.
Just a note, this is, we did list it as a consent item, so you can deal with it as normal consent.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Duffy. If there's no comments on this, then I would like to know if a board member would like to make a motion to approve.
Trustee pass, I'll move, see one routine changes, personnel changes, certificate and classified.
Thank you, trustee Panas.
Trustee Cuevas, second.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Board, let's take a vote. Please state your name before, beginning with our student trustee.
Dawit, yes?
Lara, yes?
Hannah, yes?
Cuevas, yes?
Trustee Phillips? Trustee Phillips, have you voted? I couldn't hear you.
I think he's muted.
Trustee Phillips?
I think you're muted.
Okay, there.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. I vote yes as well, so motion passes unanimously with all members of the board and our student trustee Dawit voting yes on the routine personnel changes, certified and classified or consent item. Thank you, board. Let's start our discussion items and reports. Item D1, 2020-2021 Budget and Cash Flow Update.
While that's opening, I just wanted to give some context and introduce Dr. Wold. So last week, we ran a bit long, and as we got to the end, there was board request to spend more time discussing the current state financial situation and also the district's cash situation and potential cash situation in the future with everything that's happening at the state level. So we called this special meeting really around this item. So we have a presentation this evening that Dr. Wold will give and, you know, happy to answer any questions and hope it answers a number of questions or concerns that the board has. So, Dr. Wold, thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy.
Good evening, trustees. Tonight, as part of the presentation, we also have our financial advisor, Blake Bohm from KNN, that will be available, and our bond counsel for borrowing, Graham Beck from Nixon Peabody, that will be doing part of the slides as we go forward. We can go to the next slide. In the, the board budget calendar has been posted all year long. We will, at the next board meeting, be bringing the third interim report. Most of the information that you will see tonight will be part of that third interim, so it won't be as detailed, it won't be as long a presentation since I'm doing a lot of it tonight. That is required because we are in a qualified state, which requires us to provide a third financial reporting prior to the adopted budget. We are on track to bring the adopted budget almost immediately after the next meeting on the June 10 board meeting. There won't be significant changes unless there is major changes in the May revision, which I'll talk about in a little bit, between what is presented, the third interim and the adopted budget. So moving to the next slide. Tonight, we want to talk about several things. What has the district accomplished with our budget and the reductions that the board has adopted? What has occurred in the state? Quite a bit has happened since May 7. A detailed look at our cash flow analysis, and it's better than we thought a week ago because we have been able to book some principal apportionment, but there still are concerns in the future months that we want to talk through, and then what will happen in the 2021 budget cycle. So if we can go to the next slide, please? We started this year on September 14th announcing that we had a structural deficit of 39.9 million in the current year. There, we had already started the school year, ending with no real way to make immediate reductions since staff were hired and contracts were already entered into. So this year's solutions, we utilized one time to pay our retirement liability, the OPEB trust. We also utilized a one-time preschool block grant that the state gave us, and then we used Fund 17 and reserves transferring in to equal the 39.9 million. All of that was completed by the board on January 26th at the board meeting, and we were projected to have approximately a $23 million ending fund balance at that time, which would be just about $9 million over the minimum required amount of 3%. Next slide. For next year, the board had a target of 47.8 million in ongoing reductions that were necessary. We split this up into two ways. The first part was to use the second year of OPEB, which will be 15.8 million. We then adopted different, full permanent cuts, non-salary reductions of 6 million, site allocation reductions of 2 million, unrepresented management reductions of 2 million, and then 19.8 million in reductions with our bargaining units. This left us just short, 2 million short, which would come from the reserves and the audit adjustment we had last year towards the next piece. That meant that we had prior to COVID-19, a target of $18 million that we would need to identify next year through negotiations for reductions. This has been our operating plans at September 14th of this year. This was always our expectation, and the unions knew as we reopened all the contracts next year, this is what we would be doing after the November elections. Next slide, please. So, to summarize what had happened prior to COVID-19, we adjusted the cash, the current year, 39.9. We adopted reductions that equaled 45.6 for next year's budget, and we had a target of 18 million. We would look at how we would identify that 18 million, knowing that the cuts we did this year were already very deep and very hard, and people are already feeling the impact of those cuts. We even had to do layoffs. That we would certainly put our support behind the schools and communities first as an option to bring additional revenue. With the teachers' union, we've discussed and will need to discuss with the board, even though the timing may not be great, asking our local folks to support public education with the parcel tax option in November, that would mitigate some of the cuts that we need to make. And then utilizing ending fund balances one time to try to push the problem as far as we can, so that 9 million and anything that falls through this year. Next slide, please? However, the COVID-19 has really made some changes to the way the state collects their revenue. The first major change was when the federal government switched the tax deadline from April 15th to July 15th. The biggest revenue month for the state of California is in April, when all the folks that have to pay income tax, pay their income tax. Less than 40% of the normal amount of money received in April was received by the state, with more than half of the people choosing to wait until July to pay those income taxes that are due. Since that time, unemployment has increased by 4.2 million. New claims in California have been filed since mid-March. The Department of Finance is estimating that before the end of the year, the unemployment rate in California will reach over 18%. This, it should be noted that prior to COVID-19, the unemployment rate was below 5% in the state. On May 7th, last week, the Department of Finance released an update that stated that their estimate that the 2021 state budget has now shifted from a projected $5.6 billion surplus at the state level to up to a $54.3 billion deficit. So almost a $60 billion shift in their budget. 13.4 billion is being attributed to the current year, meaning that they have over apportioned to education and to government agencies by 13.4 billion based on the guarantees, and that an additional 40.9 would be reduced potentially from the 2021 budget. Moving forward, so if you look at how California gets their money, this is an important piece. California is very, very reliant on income tax, sales tax, and corporation tax. Property tax only accounts for 27% of our revenue. Across the United States, it's 37%. This is very important because property tax is very stable. It rarely goes down more than a percent ever, and it usually goes up anywhere from 3% to 5% to assessed value because when a person sells their house, it now goes up at a higher tax rate. So you very rarely have people having their houses depreciate and cost less and be able to pay less in income tax. So California being reliant on income is very critical as income drops and people are unemployed, it's going to quickly have an effect on the state's income, as will the 1% that do their taxes. Next slide. So if you look at how the state is based on income tax, this is showing the difference between the last time California had a fiscal crisis. In 2008, we have the beginning of what was called the Great Recession, where public education did not see increases in funding for seven years. And the whole local control funding formula, if you remember, was designed to bring us back to the same funding levels as 2007. So the blue bars are how much each of those dropped during the Great Recession. So total personal income dropped by 5%, total wages and salaries 6%, corporate income by 24%, property income by 14%, and then you have what are your transfer receipts increasing, and that's more your debt. So what you can see is the red lines are what they're predicting because of COVID-19, and they're more than double what we were looking at happening in 2008. For those of us that were in school business or in schools, in 2008, 9, 10, 11, those were very challenging times with layoffs and crisis pretty much every year. The impact of this to the Prop 98 guarantee could be as great as $18.3 billion. We'll talk about our district in a little bit. Slide 10, please? So this is just another look at how much this is in billions of dollars there as you look, and so what they're talking about is that the reduction for COVID-19 and 1920 is only 110. But if you take a look at 2122, that's when everyone will file their income taxes for the 2020 calendar year. This year is where everyone's losing their revenue, so we won't see that tax drop as significant until next year's taxes, a year from now in April, and they're projecting it's going to be twice as bad as what we're seeing based on the first three months. Next slide, please? So our reliance on state revenue, this is a slide that came from Edsource, really shows that those same percentages, you can see how it drops, and that our funding is 59% from the state, 32% from property tax. So 60% of our revenue is at significant risk as we play it out, and the way it plays out is districts are first funded with property tax. The state then makes up the difference between property tax and state aid. So those districts that have higher property tax rates and bases will actually not feel as big a hit as districts that do have significant state aid such as ourselves. Next slide, please? There was a fiscal alert that came out from FICMAT that our county office focused on, and I forwarded it to the board on the Friday letter. Trustee Panas had brought that up as something that we all should read. So the big areas that were takeaways from there is the rapidly declining state revenue and delay in tax returns won't really be known until fall. The governor will do his May revise tomorrow. However, we do not anticipate that he's going to give concrete information. A lot of it's going to be, we need to see what the tax rates come in, in July and August, and then we're going to be right back where we were back on September 14th this year, when we came in and we said, okay, the budget we adopted in June said this. That's not where we stand. This district is going to be in the same exact position based on the state this time, saying, okay, this is what we think. This is what the state has now done. Here are the changes that we're going to have to make right now in the current year. So what FICMAT is reminding us is that we need to have prudent financial planning, and we need to build our assumptions on realistic considerations based on the data. So, and keeping stakeholders informed is vital. That's going to be our biggest challenge, is to make sure that we continue to provide the board and our stakeholders the most up-to-date and accurate information we possibly can. Next slide, please? So FICMAT believes that the best case is that the cost of living increase that we had budgeted to be 3% increase back in January is going to be at best a minus 2%, and worst, it could be as far as a minus 10%. There, they do believe that there's going to be inter-year apportionment deferrals, and we'll talk about what that means when we get to cash flow, that you're going to see program cuts such as the preschool, and that we are, we, while we will have some relief from the state's budget rainy day fund, the budget stabilization account, the only, of that 18 billion, they can only use 10 billion probably for education, so it doesn't cover the entire gap. However, FICMAT does not have confidence that it's going to be a minus 10% at this point. Mike Fine did a webinar with us on Friday with all the county CBOs, and he said, he goes, at this point, they feel that it's going to be somewhere between the zero and minus 2 or 3% initially, and then it may be a little more later, but there's a lot of belief that the federal government may do something, and that'll come up in the next slide, please, 14? So how will the state approach the 98 gap? So there's going to be both financial and political pieces. They're going to have to look at that 18.3 billion. The first thing they can do is inter-year apportionment deferrals. At the height of the deferrals in 2010-11, the state was deferring 10 billion in revenue from month to month. Then looking at what size of non-proposition 98 cuts can be made, and then what other reliefs can be brought in, whether it be the rainy day fund, or whether it be something from other revenue increases. Moving to the next slide. So here are the realities that FICMAT recommends, that right now, revenue is fairly stable. The AD has held us harmless, but lottery and local are down slightly. We do have We do have unplanned extraordinary expenses, all districts do because of COVID nineteen. Reserves across the state are starting to trend down because of the pandemic. Cash, which was strong, will decline rapidly with the June apportionment deferral. When we talked last week late, we were concerned that the size of the deferral might actually create an issue in June. It will not for us, but we will have small deficits in our projections starting in July. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. So the key takeaway is update your cash projections now. So the physical realities, revenue of the January tenth proposal is scrapped, that two point three one percent COLA is out the door. So the question is, what do we budget for? Is it the minus two? Is it the zero? Continued distance learning costs will continue to impact our budget. There is some flexibility on carryovers that will allow us to potentially hold some dollars towards cuts and not have to do a August layoff of teachers or a second layoff of classified. Cash is going to be critical to monitor that on a monthly basis. They do not expect that the May revision or the June adoption are going to be the true picture of our budget. So it's very important that we're all clear that what we're going to be looking at, both next board meeting, the twentieth and the tenth, will not have a full picture of what the expectations are for school districts. Moving forward. In the out years, having a multi-year projection is critical. What decisions we make today will most definitely make a difference in how we are able to react or be nimble as changes happen. And so you really want to, a dollar that you don't spend today saves you at least a year of having to make that cut because it holds into those reserves. We will not see the big impact of the downward spiral next year's budget. Where we will see a significant reduction is in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Some partners are believing that it might be as big as fifteen percent without intervention from other agencies. Slide eighteen, please. So let's talk about our district. Before COVID, we knew that we had to cut eighteen million dollars. Assuming that the COLA is now removed, which we are going to assume, and we're building this into our immediate budget, that's a loss of eight point eight million in revenue that we had anticipated. That means that our cut, best case scenario, this is the best case scenario, is twenty-six point eight million dollars, which is a significant cut, knowing how much we already cut this year. So our focus since the last couple of months since COVID is we are going to save every single dollar we possibly can save in reserves to protect against that cut amount, to allow us to do this in the right rational way. We definitely need to advocate for schools and community first and the potential of parcel tax to bring in additional revenue that the state or federal government won't give to us. But then we have to be prepared. What do negative COLAs look like? For each one percent that the COLA goes negative, it's another two point eight million. So if you look at that chart, if it's a minus five percent COLA, our cut target just jumped to forty point eight million. There as we go, if it's a fifteen percent, like some had said, that would be sixty-eight point eight million dollars. There are almost a fifth of our entire budget. Moving to the next slide. So this is our multi-year projection. That the three sixty-nine in revenue and the four oh six in expense created that thirty-six million dollar deficit. You'll remember that we had that one-time money. That's why that isn't thirty-nine and it's only thirty-six. So for next year, as we build in the zero percent COLA for each of those two years, revenue drops to three hundred and sixty-three million. Expenses with the cuts put in and all the new cost of living pieces is three hundred and ninety million. That will be adjusted slightly on cash with the OPEC transfer. That leaves us with an ending balance positive at the end of next year of seven point eight million dollars. However, our reserve needs to be three percent. So we are actually short in our ending fund balance without some additional cash, seven million. So our goal is just to make that up. We believe when we close the books in August with the unaudited actuals, that we will have enough cash through fall-through in different budget areas to cover that and end up exactly with the three percent reserve at this point. That's the intent, and we're still going through each piece as we've been going through the budget to do that. Moving forward, it does not assume cuts. So you can see without cuts being made in twenty twenty-one, the impact on twenty-one, twenty-two. As soon as cuts are built in, we would reduce the expenses there and the deficit would drop slightly. Moving to the next slide. This is the slide that talks about our ongoing expenses, the cost to opening the doors. These are things that we don't really have the ability to change dramatically. So we have updated based on the reductions in staff and based on the things that we do know, the expenses for twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. You can see that our expenses next year still go up by fifteen million. They're part of it, special ed always continues to increase in cost. We also are seeing more cost in insurance and workers' compensation. Two things that impacted that, now anyone that is affected by COVID nineteen can claim workers' compensation. And there was a legislative law that allowed for people to go back in time to file child abuse or to file molestation claims from previous years. The statute of limitations that expired is now no longer there. And there's already been multiple claims across many districts. And so our liability insurance for all school districts is going up fairly significantly, probably over a hundred thousand dollars just because of that assembly bill. So those are our two years of expenses that are built into what you will see in the third interim and the adopted budget. Moving forward. So cash flow. Because we've had to utilize our reserves to mitigate our current year, the management of cash is very critical. At the second interim, trustee Panis brought up an issue that we had gone negative in cash on our cash report in both October and November. And nothing had been brought to the board because there hadn't been any action. So we went back and talked to the county about where the oversight was and what was happening. And it turned out that many districts in the county had been going negative in cash in those two months. And no actions had been taken. And a lot of this was, people just weren't looking as closely as they should have been. What, what had occurred is after LCFF came, districts were so flush with cash and the county treasuries were doing so fine that we had stopped doing the monthly looks that we had been doing. One of the things we're going to immediately implement, we're going to send cash reports to the board every month. We're going to update based on the information we've received, bring it to the board, have a conversation, make sure that we're monitoring it. The other thing is that the county uses what's called a TEATER program, where they have us book the property taxes in July, but we don't get all of them until later. If you look at our cash flow that we provided to you, you'll see one of the large state apportionments also didn't come till the end of March. So it was not yet fully booked in our reconciliation until this week. Once we booked that and the projected there, that changed our cash flow significantly for the next two years with that thirty-eight million that came in in March. And then the forty-two million that is coming through on property tax that came in in April. So those two things had not been booked fully when we did our last analysis. Even a week ago, it changed. And so now we're looking at ending this year with a fourteen million dollar positive cash balance in June. There, but the important thing is that when the state has budget issues, what they do is they tell us, we'll give you the money next month. You book it now. But then for them, they don't have to consider an expense till the next year. So if you go to slide twenty-two. This is what the state has done in the past, back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. So I bring back my favorite character from Popeye, Wimpy. There, he will gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today. That's sort of where the state is. And what you can see is that they did different types of deferrals. For example, from February twelfth to July twelfth, so that was a long deferral. That meant that the money got booked in your books as if you had it for budget purposes in February. But you didn't actually receive the cash till the following fiscal year in July. And that was two billion at the state level. You can see another one they did from March to August. So there's another one crossing a fiscal year, a third deferral from April to August. Another deferral from April to August, then another deferral from April to July. So what you can see is, by the time they're done, they're sending eight to ten billion dollars as being booked in one year for the school districts, but not being received in cash till the following year, which requires districts to be able to cover their operating expenses, even though they're clean on the budget side. They have to be able to, when the state doesn't provide the check on time, we have to borrow to make sure that we can pay our payroll. So slide twenty-three. This is our current cash flow analysis. It's very, very small. I apologize to the audience and everyone else. This is our projected cash flow this year. You will see, as trustee Panis did in both October and November, we did have negative numbers that the county didn't jump. Nobody kind of jumped on there. We had seventy-five million in cash received in December, which changed us back to the positive side. There, we project to end after all expenses in June with fourteen million. Where we now start to see an issue and where we need to talk about options is next year. Next slide, please. So next year, if you take a look at it, there, we, even with the deferral being pushed from to July, from June to July, and there's no guarantee that the state will have enough revenue in July to pay that deferral in July. That puts us hovering before we close the books at about seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand negative cash in our Fund One. However, we know that we're going to receive approximately six million dollars from the federal government from that first ESER payment that was approved. That cash will drop into there, which should change that to a positive because at this point, we haven't designated expenditures for that. Those expenses would happen next year. So that will be updated once it's received. We can't put it in until we're positive, when it's going to drop in there. So that one would be most likely a positive in July, assuming the state does pay the, the apportionment as we expect. There, then you can see that we have slight negatives, and we'll talk about options for those going forward. That's where I'm going to have both Blake and Graham speak real quickly about those options. You can see the same thing that our big change happens in December with projected seventy-five million in property taxes dropping in the cash then. And then we end the year with a positive balance. So if we go to the next slide, I believe this is where I'll bring in Graham and Blake. Have they been promoted up?
Yes, Dr. Weld, I am here. This is Graham, back from Nixon Peabody. And good evening to the board. As, as Tony mentioned, we've presented here a few of the options that are available to the district to manage its cash for the next fiscal year. The first is to essentially do some temporary inter-fund borrowing. And this is a process where the district temporarily transfers its cash between the funds at the county treasurer to ensure that no, none of the funds carry a negative cash balance. There are some limitations on this, primarily that there's only a maximum of seventy-five percent of the monies that are held in the fund can be transferred, and also that it's not available to all funds. And most importantly, as your bond counsel, it's not available to the bond fund. This is, there are significant violations of state and federal law that can happen if borrowing does come from the bond fund. So we just avoid it if we can. The next option is to borrow from the county. The county, Contra Costa County does have a program where they can lend money to districts. It, we, there, when there, it was looked at for the prior fiscal year, when there, it was thought there was an issue there. The application period had already run before that situation had sort of become germane. At this point, it is an option going forward for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. The other two options, which are on the right side, are TRANs. And that stands for Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes. The first is what's referred to as a pooled TRAN, because you would form a pool with other school districts in the county that are in a similar cash situation. And then you and those other districts could go and with some relatively minimal county involvement, offer the notes for sale on your own behalf. The other option on the bottom is to, for a purely West Contra Costa TRAN, that would be issued by the county. So essentially, you would request the county to issue the TRAN on your behalf. And from there, it would go through, and actually, this is true for both the single TRAN and for the pooled TRAN. It would be generally a similar process to what you go through with your GO bond offerings. So that would mean engaging an underwriter, preparing a disclosure document, offering the notes for sale, and then closing a little bit after that. And Blake at KNN will run through a potential TRAN timeline later on. And with that, I think we can go on to the next slide.
So when we look at our issues there, our normal budget practice allows us to utilize cash and other funds to manage needs. The way we would do that, we will bring forward a formal resolution to have that authorization to do so. And as Graham said, a maximum of seventy-five percent from each fund's balance can be utilized. So the, and we want to make it real clear, bond funds cannot be used for cash management. So it's embold there. It's very clear. We're never looking at bond funds in any way whatsoever. They're completely separate from this issue. So the funds that we do have available that are not Fund One, Fund Seventeen, that's our special reserve, but that includes our three percent. So really, that fourteen million, it's usable, but then that means we're below the three percent, which is still allowable as long as you have positive cash. Fund twenty-five has eleven point eight million. That's our capital facilities non-bond fund. And then Fund Forty is our special reserve for capital outlay, and that's projected to have nine point five million. So we maintain the three percent in Fund Seventeen. So if you take Fund Twenty-five and Fund Forty and never touch our three percent at any time, though we could, that would mean that we have about twenty million dollars for inter-fund availability as needed, which is no cost borrowing to the district. That would allow us to ameliate any cash shortfall that is less than fifteen million. It's important to understand, if we do borrowing, there's a cost to that borrowing. The interest now gets charged directly to the general fund, so does the cost of issuance. We do have to go out and get bond ratings. As we talked with the board to approve our la, the issuing of the last of our measure D and E, we were doing so because we had a very we had an inkling that the bond rating agencies were going to stop, start dropping the ratings on school districts. They had done Oakland before. Standard and Poor's affirmed our rating and kept it exactly the same. Moody's, however, just today dropped our rating, so we now have a split rating. Because, and it's directly because of the state, because Moody's had affirmed our rating not even three weeks earlier with no different changes in our condition. It had entirely to do with the May seventh announcement. And so we are lucky that the bonds that we're going to sell are going to be able to go with that split rating. So we won't have a significant impact to the interest rate. It'll be a couple basis points. But had we waited, we would have had both ratings dropped, and it would have been a much more significant impact in the rate, in the interest rate that our taxpayers would have had to pay to keep those dollars. So we were very prudent to get moving forward with that because unfortunately, the ratings agencies are only going to be dropping districts more and more. With that, Blake, you want to walk through the timeline, should we have to not just use inter-fund borrowing and had to do outside borrowing?
Yeah, I think that the slide here is still for Graham, just to lay out the parameters as it pertains to
Oh, that's right.
Revenue anticipation note.
Great, thank you, Blake. And I will just sort of briefly go through some of the laws that pertain to TRANs. First, under state law, and second, if the TRANs are issued on a tax-exempt basis, which I think generally is the preference, what federal law would apply. Under state law, the TRAN, you have fifteen months after the TRANs are issued to pay them back. The revenue can be received during the fiscal year or have accrued during the fiscal year and be paid back later. The amount that you can borrow is limited to eighty-five percent of the revenues that are uncollected that you expect to be available for payment of those TRANs. And finally, unlike your GO bonds, as Tony mentioned, which are paid from property taxes, these are going to be secured by the other taxes, revenues, cash receipts, and other monies that have been pledged by the district, essentially, in the general fund. The notes would be payable from the first monies that are received from those pledged amounts. Now, in order to do the TRANs on a tax-exempt basis, there's a few other federal laws that would apply. Generally, the size of the TRAN is limited to your greatest cash flow deficit that occurs within six months of the issue. There is some flexibility to allow for a reasonable working capital There is some flexibility to allow for a reasonable working capital reserve, about 5% of your prior year general fund expenditures. And the proceeds of the tran must be spent within six months of the issue and are treated as spent only when there are no other available amounts to pay such expenditures. So essentially, that means that the tran proceeds are spent last after all the other available amounts are expended. But when we talk about available amounts, one, that's only the amounts that are legally allowed to use for those general fund expenditures, and also that it would take into account that reasonable working capital reserve so that you would still have that 5% amount there. Finally, as, as I mentioned, you can issue trans on a taxable basis if it turns out that there is an issue with any of these federal laws. And there is some penalty, but not overly so. And so with that, I think at this point, Blake, I'll turn it over to you to walk through a potential schedule.
Yeah, I think, I think the key thing to share here on timing, you know, as mentioned earlier by Dr. Wold, a lot of a interim borrowing via tran sale or issuance encompasses a lot of what the board and, you know, many who follow along with the district's general obligation bond program entails. There's, it's a process of drafting documents, which ultimately go to the board for approval, seeking ratings from rating agencies. In this case, it would entail going to the county board of supervisors to seek their approval, as the tran would actually be issued through the county on behalf of the district. Once the governance approvals are in place, ratings are in place, we would post a preliminary official statement, follow, which would lead into pricing and then closing the transaction. Really, the quickest amount of time, and what's laid out on the slide, is roughly a 60-day period, and that is an expedited process. You know, and I think the main point that I wanted to impress upon the board and others following along here is that it really is going to be a focused cash flow management process on a month-by-month basis, making sure the administration is conveying updates to the board. So there's a lead-in time and a runway that we could not only identify the most appropriate option for interim borrowing, should that event come up, but that it's done so in a timely manner so that the cash balances could be preserved without running deficit.
So if we could go back three slides really quickly to the borrowing options before I go forward, I just want to kind of summarize really quickly. Thank you, right there. So when we first became aware, we're working with the county office on this directly, and the CBOs are now meeting, all county CBOs are meeting every week to talk about issues. We all started collectively looking at cash flow two weeks ago, and most of us started to notice that if we aren't already in trouble in June, that we're going to have issues starting in the next year because of the deferrals. We created our most up-to-date cash flow analysis. We sent it to Bill Clark at the county office. We had Blake and Graham review it as well, so that we had three sets of eyes besides our own, looking at options. At that point, we weren't sure if June was going to be in play or not. And so we were looking at what are our options outside of our own. As we sit today, our biggest deficit is at 9.7 million. That would be able to be handled with interfund transfers without any cost to the district and no loss of any revenue or loss of anything else. Should apportionments grow, our next option, because many other districts are in the same exact boat, would be to borrow directly from the county treasury. They charge significantly less. You don't have to go through and do all of the ratings agency things. So we don't get charged the penalty of poor ratings. That would be our next option as we go forward. The third, if the county treasury starts to run into trouble with their cash flow, would be that multiple districts are going to be in the same exact situation with deferrals, that we would then look at a pooled trans under the umbrella of the Contra Costa County Office of Education. So again, it wouldn't be as impacted significantly by the ratings agencies. Before we go to the fourth option, which is us having to go that way. At this point, what we plan to bring to the board, as I go to close, if we'll go now back to the next steps calendar stage, we plan to bring a resolution to the board to authorize for next year the ability for staff to do interfund borrowing with board knowledge. So we would notify the board before we did it with our cash flow updates. But that would be our first mitigating factor, which doesn't increase costs to the district, it doesn't add expense. We would then, if necessary, bring forward options if we have to borrow outside, starting with the county, which is the lowest cost, and then moving forward. Our timeline is the third interim on the 20th with that resolution. The budget adoption on June 10th. There will not be significant difference in our revenue or expenditure between the May 20th and June 10th, because there's so much up in the air. The governor's budget update, we believe, will be August or September. In September, we bring the unaudited actuals, which will tell us exactly what our final carryover amounts were that we can use towards the current year cuts. We'll also very likely be doing a 45-day budget revision based on if there's a bigger cut in that governor's announcement in August or September. The November 2020 elections will be a big deal for our revenue. If schools and communities first passes, that will change the cut targets that we need to do. If we do move forward with a parcel tax, and that's a conversation that we need to agendize to have that open conversation about the pros and cons of doing so, that could significantly mitigate some of the cuts and layoffs that we would have to do. And we would know in November whether that passed or not. And that would then allow us to negotiate those results right after, which is the normal timeline for negotiations. The LCAP has been delayed until December 2020. So there's going to be a lot of questions from, what are you doing with LCAP? How are you addressing this need? How are you addressing that? Based on the state's guidance, that is sort of on hold as we're waiting to see how the state is going to fund us, and that gets pushed forward. We're still working on many of the board priorities to build those pieces in within the resources we have. Do you go to the last slide? Our work is to be collaboratively working with our associations, but it's about telling the story of what public education needs for adequate funding. In 2009, 10, and 2010, 11, the federal government provided stabilization money called ARR-A. I go back to the time when I was in a very large urban district. That money was equivalent to, for us, about 18 to 25 million dollars per year, each of those years. If you were to take the same percentage in today's dollars, what West Contra Costa would be eligible for, if they did the same exact type of era as they did then, that would be enough for us to mitigate the 18 that we have, plus absorb another 1% or 2% and stay with what we've already cut and not have to cut more. So that's a big lobbying. Assemblywoman Pelosi, Speaker Pelosi, it has put a $1 trillion ed package for ed in states. That package would indeed provide very close to what the era did in 2009, 2010. So it is really incumbent upon us to raise our voices on how we can make the cuts. We know we have to make the 26 million. We know we're going to have to build a plan. You go back to schools and community first and parcel could be a big portion of that plan without those. We are looking at very deep, painful cuts that we're going to have to negotiate after that election. That was a lot of information. Both Blake and Graham are here to answer questions, and as am I. We thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Wold, Mr. Graham, and Mr. Wold for the presentation and for all the details that you included. Mr. Walton, do we have public comment for this item?
There, excuse me, there is one public comment for this item.
Thank you.
One moment.
Thank you. And since it's one public comment, we can have up to three minutes for it.
The public comment is from Audrey Shields. Hello, board members. My name is Audrey Shields, and I'm a resident of Richmond. I grew up in Richmond and attended Perry's Elementary, Roosevelt Junior High, and Richmond High School. I also attended Contra Costa College. I'm very excited and hopeful, based on the board's passage of the ASAT resolution, which allocates 14% of the district's budget to build out an office of African-American achievement and creating a vision toward equal education for black students and closing the 70 to 100-year achievement gap between African-American children and other students in this district. Since the passage of asset, the asset resolution and before, I've made multiple attempts to understand where and how the money is spent on programs to address academic challenges faced by African-American kids. Doing so has felt like someone has trapped me into playing a shell game. Nobody has a given clear, specific answers. Excuse me, and everyone who should know appears either not answer or keep hiding the coins, pawning me off to someone else. To begin to get an understanding of how the budget operates and how money is allocated to resolve the black academic failings in this district, I've drafted a list of 16 preliminary questions that I need to have answered to begin to understand how we can follow and identify the money and programs designated by this board to be directed to cure the long-term effects of racial discrimination suffered by black people in this district and allow black stakeholders to have a say in how to begin to deliver true and effective services for our black students, who will likely include my future grandchildren. Attached is my list of 16 questions, which I have previously presented to district staff, requesting a meeting to discuss answers, but to date, I have not heard back. I'm requesting now that the board direct staff grant me a meeting with the person who can answer my questions or the staff be directed to give me specific written answers to these questions. I'm requesting the meeting or written answers be done within two weeks, on or before May 27, 2020. As the board knows, time is of the essence because decisions are now being made about the 2020 to 2023 budget. My questions are attached. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Walton, for reading the comment, and thank you, Ms. Shields, for sharing your comment with us. Board, I would like to begin with us having a discussion on this item. And I would ask that we begin with the same order that we were having earlier with our student trustee first, and then with the board, starting with trustee Lada, then trustee Phillips, trustee Cuévas, and trustee Panis, and then myself.
Um, thank you for that. I didn't fully understand all of it. It sounded really sophisticated. But, um, I don't know, I don't really have any questions right now. But thank you for that, though.
Thank you, soon trustee David. Trustee Lada?
Yes, I want to thank everybody who was involved in getting all this information together for us. And what I realize is that it's changing every month, every week. Could be changing every day. And I especially appreciated the Friday memo and all the details in that, Dr. Wold. I really appreciate that. And I hope you'll continue to do that in giving us those details, because that's really what we need, is that all, as much information as we can get. And then I have a question about, I noticed, you know, a partial tax seems very appropriate. Why would we not do another bond as well? But that's only used for facilities, right? So it really wouldn't help us in that much. Oh, the other question I had was, parcel tax can be used for salaries, correct?
Correct. So a parcel tax, it's based on what you put in the ballot line, which our current parcel tax does pay for salaries as well as athletics and library pieces. So this one, when we did our last polling, what polled very well was teachers, maintaining teachers. And so I can tell you that we have talked with UTR. They have put money away in their PAC. They are prepared to run a parcel tax campaign.
Okay.
And when will that Ready to do that and very willing to do that.
Excellent. When did that come to us for a vote?
Well, we would need to agendize it for conversation. We would have to make a decision probably by, by July, but really, to get everything moving, you'd want to make the decision probably in the month of June. So have an open discussion and then a vote at a subsequent meeting as we go forward. And that would be allowing us to then determine how many cuts we could mitigate and build what that language will be for what could be paid there. As for a bond, since we passed Measure R, we haven't even issued those bonds right now. That's why we moved so quickly to issue the old Measure D and E, because bond ratings dropping, which they are and will continue to do, we don't want to go to market for a couple more years. We will have that money to be able to maintain our bond program, allow the state and federal government to kind of get out of this COVID-19 issue. And right when we start recovery, that's when we'll be ready to start issuing Measure R bonds and maintain our facilities program for a while. So we don't need to even consider more facility bonds at any point. We're in a very good place. This board was very proactive by putting it on the March ballot, knowing what has changed in the state. We made a significantly wise investment for the students of our district. And by moving forward with that bond sale, we're not going to get hit as hard on the ratings as we could have.
Right. Well, thank you very much again. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Lada. Sorry, my microphone was muted. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you very much. I agree that we do need to have a conversation about parcel tax. I think that it is very important that there's a full community discussion right now.
Trustee Phillips, I cannot hear you. I'm not sure if other members of the board or public can hear you. Do you mind muting your mic and unmuting again?
Did I, did I, wow. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, how likely do you think it is that there will be a negative COLA?
I'm not perfectly sure. I think that we may start seeing the May one at zero, and then they come back in September or August with that negative COLA. That's a, that's a possibility there that would not surprise me at all. There, I will, in the Friday letter, put what we're hearing from the state tomorrow in there, whether it's going to go there, and then we'll adjust. It may not be reflected in our third interim, because we won't have time to change the Saks forms that quick. But we will kind of know. I don't know that they're going to go negative immediately, because other districts, not us, but other districts would instantly not be able to cover their bills next year. And then you'd have a huge uproar. The big urbans that are already asking for an extra 100 million right now would probably, will hand you up. So I think they're going to push the envelope for a couple of months.
My opinion, my request, is that we budget, assuming that there's going to be a negative COLA. The reason that I am suggesting that we do that is, you know, if you feel that it wouldn't be a surprise for the COLA to go negative, and I think you said for every percent negative, it's 2.8 million. Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, if we don't assume, we basically build in the worst projections that you can on funding. Because if you are not conservative and you do basically a liberal budget, or you make liberal projections, and those projections don't come true, we're going to be in a world of hurt. I would much rather see us as a district budget for a negative COLA. We believe that's what it's going to be versus budget for 0% or 1%. Because what we would essentially be doing is budgeting for money that we know deep down, deep down inside, that we're really not going to get. And we can't, we can't build budgets based on monies that we don't really think are going to be there. And so my request to staff is if you believe that it's going to go negative, even if it's not in May, but if you think a couple of months later, they're going to slap us with a negative COLA, I would like to see us budget for that negative COLA from the beginning, not be behind the eight ball trying to play catch up. The other thing that I wanted to ask you, and thank you very much for your presentation. I do think that it was a good presentation. But the other thing I wanted to ask you is, have we gotten molestation claims? You
We have not, but we are in a larger pool, and there's 400 districts in the pool. So one district gets a claim, everyone's rates go up.
Okay, okay. And then the last point about the steps. So doing interfund transfers, then going to the county, then doing the transpool, going to the county treasury, and then doing the transpool, and then finally going to the open market, is what I think you were saying. I agree with those steps. If they are necessary, that we take them in that order. And those are my comments for now. Thank you.
So I just want to respond really quickly.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Dr. Wold?
Yeah, really quickly regarding the budgeting aspect, there's a couple of things that we're already doing that I think would follow right along, along with what you're asking. First thing, we're doing any revenue that we believe is First thing we're doing, any revenue that we believe is not going to come in. If we put it in the budget, we instantly reserve that, don't allow the expense to be made so that if it's taken away.
Dr. Wolf, sorry to interrupt. I think we have another microphone on. Mr. Walton. Could you check the microphone? Thank you so much.
Then. Sorry, the second area that we do is we are holding off on what we call soft money expenditures. So we're not going to allow people to hire back staff with those monies that could potentially be cut. We'll wait till August or September, once we have a clearer picture. Same thing with contracts, unless they're essential for operations, we won't renew them. The ones that we'll bring in June tenth are our normal annual must be renewed. Everything else, we will hold off and wait so that we are sure that we have both control of the expenditures that we might have to cut mid-year. As well as not budgeting revenue that we might not receive, keeping it reserved down so it doesn't go through. So we're doing both of the things you're asking for.
Thank you. And so the, the other thing very quickly is we had a conversation some time ago about targets. And. Now that we know that our targets are off, right? And not necessarily because we, you know, did incorrect projections, but because there's a pandemic going on. And there are new and, you know, extensive costs associated with that. The cost that we lay, I mean, the targets that we've laid out, we really do need to hit the targets. Because this thing is, is snowballing. And it's not, I'm not saying it's anybody's fault that's on this call, but this thing is snowballing. As we kick things down the road and we were kicking things down the road, now we have this COVID situation on top of that. We cannot afford, in my opinion, not to hit our targets that we set out initially because. The floor is about to come out and I could be wrong and I'm not trying to be, you know, say a doomsday scenario or anything like that. But if there's an eighteen billion dollar cut. To, and obviously that's more than our district, but if there's an eighteen billion dollar cut to K twelve education in California. That is going to be frankly disastrous and we're not going to be able to really spread that thing out. So as we're setting aside monies for the reserves. I, I really want to see those reserves used not to allow us to continue to deficit spend. Frankly, but. For what I believe is truly a rainy day because the storm is about to come. And I know that. This is difficult, but when that storm really hits, if we don't have any reserves. Because we've been using the reserves that we have to continue deficit spending, we're going to be much. In a much worse position than we are if we had just hit a bullet in the first place.
Understood. Thank you. And we will continue to monitor that and make sure that we do hit those targets.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Cuevas.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Mr. Dr. Wold, can you please put up your presentation again and go back to. The slide where you talked about. Our protection Indiana positive versus a negative for this year. Or I think it's for next year.
The cash flow.
Cash flow.
Sure. So that would be slide number. Twenty-four, I believe. Is that the slide? Or is it the NYPD slide nineteen? I think we lost you, trustee.
Which changes that one. Okay. Now, this is third interim multi-year projections for our actual budget, correct?
Correct. This is where we're standing today.
And we're not talking about cash flow here. We're talking about the whole budget, correct?
Correct.
And so if based on what you found, twenty, your twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Am I reading that correct that you believe we're going to pretty much close the deficit, just be a tiny bit. Short of using whatever excess we have to go right into. The reserve.
What, what we believe is we're going to end the year with nineteen million. We will end up after the cuts because of the OPEB transfer, which is sort of invisible in here. When, because we budget for the OPEB expense in our expenses. When we get the transfer, it changes money as we close the books. That will actually come back in there. So we end up only deficit spending by that seven million. There, which is what we have to maintain. So it, it's a little tricky to look at that. The way it plays out because we added, there's two things that we added in there. We added in the new eight million dollar cut that we hadn't addressed yet, that we're going to have to address with fall through. We know that that will be covered by six million that we're going to get from the federal government this year that has not been built into here anywhere. So what's going to happen is our revenue is going to jump from three sixty-nine to three seventy-five in the current year. And when we close the books in August, you will see that ending balance will be at least twenty-five million. My projection right now is I think it's going to jump to not twenty-five with the era, but probably twenty-nine, maybe thirty million. So it's going to be higher because in the last three years, every time you close the books, you've had negatives and your balance has gone down. This year, we've been managing things much differently. I believe that you're going to see a positive fall through. And we're still working on improving our reconciliation. I wish it was quicker. It got a little slower during COVID nineteen. So we're a month behind, but my guess on everything is that you will see. A positive trend of almost ten million dollars more, which will. Close and leave us with a little over three percent at the end of the year. Based on the reductions that we've already embedded, that'll get us through to the next year. That's why the twenty-six million is our current cut target. Which is our deficit moving forward to the next year. And as trustee Phillips said, then the following year, if we do nothing, it'd be thirty-seven. It'll change as each scenario goes forward and we build in the cash pieces. But that's why we're not changing the target of twenty-six, even if cash comes in, because that would be spending one time money for ongoing.
Right, because it's one time dollars. We're not getting the six million back again. That's the COVID from the feds, right?
Yeah, so that's why the twenty-six is our current target.
The CARES, the CARES Act, right?
Yes.
So then, what I hear you saying is technically we don't have to make adjustments in twenty twenty-one, but if we don't. Then the debt, then, then we'll fill it the following year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
That's going to be such a bigger year. We have to make the twenty-six million in cuts are going to have to be made either through new revenue. Or through actual cuts. So either way, those are the same thing. It's not one time solutions. One time just keeps us moving. And that's what we're using it for, to give us the opportunity to do this, just like we did this year. We've been following a very good model, working with our partners to do this collegially and collaboratively. But we do need to identify twenty-six million dollars in permanent solutions. So it's got to be a combination of revenue.
Right, and I hear what you're saying. It's just when do you want to start to trustee Phillips' point? Do you want to start that in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and identifying those cuts or?
Yes, by November, we start negotiating with the unions. Based on what happens at the November election, that's when our target will be finalized. And then we jump in and we do exactly what we did this year from November to February. We finalize, we're going to start the conversation today. We're already starting the work for twenty twenty-one cuts with the associations and saying we need to start identifying permanent solutions. And so every dollar we don't spend today and don't put back into the budget is a dollar we don't have to cut tomorrow.
Okay, so again, I'm just trying to get some, some definitives here. One is, is that it's. Our budget, our budget management on, and what I call some austere budget management. Is in what I hear you saying, putting us in a better position to address what's going to happen to us when. Everybody deals with the COVID implications financially, correct?
Yeah, we're going to be better than we would have been, but we're still needing to take action.
So here's my second question, which is the need to take action. You're saying that cash flow is going to become an issue. And that you have proposed, as Mr. Phillips, trustee Phillips mentioned. A kind of step approach to how to deal with cash flow. Tell me why that cash flow is going to be a problem and when it starts again, you said.
So it starts as early as July, but because again, we haven't booked all of the carryover. I believe that our first month that we will see cash flow issues will likely not be until September. I believe that we'll have enough additional carryover in, at the close of the books that. Our current negatives of seven hundred thousand for July and five point eight million in August. Should be covered with carryover, but until we can book that, I can't say that. So I assume no dollars. So we would have to do interfund borrowing. To cover our full cash flows in August and September, October, November. It keeps going up and down. We would then be fine. We'd be flush with cash with fifty-five million in a balance in December. And then for the rest of that year, at this point, barring no additional deferrals, we'd be okay. So it's, it's a short term.
Okay, here's my next question for you. The cash flow issue is the result that you're predicting will hit us hardest in September is a result of deferred. Deferred payment budget. Approaches that you're predicting the state will take because they've done that before.
Correct.
And what that means basically is the state says it's an IOU. You have the money, but we owe it to you. I, I, I'm not going to put the hard cash in your hand yet.
That is correct. Promisingly note.
Okay, meanwhile, we have to pay and make payroll and keep our schools running off a promise, correct?
Yes.
Which is why you're saying here are these approaches to deal with cash flow. Now you're saying that when the, you're predicting the state will then deliver that IOU by December. And our cash flow problem will not, will be, whatever we might borrow will be basically be able to be paid back by then.
Yeah, so if you go to slide number twenty-four, it's small, but that's probably the best way to show you what I'm talking about. And I know I sent it, it's a separate handout as well for those at home. If you go to slide number twenty-four and you look at down in December. There and you look at other current assets. This is property tax. You have what the state is, what the county is going to give us that we booked the one eleven, but that's not cash. Which is negative in July, but you can see a cash change of seventy-five point nine million in December. That's when that money comes in.
Can I ask that, are you certain that that's what we're going to get from, or is that just another prediction?
Well, if you go back one slide to slide twenty-three. And you look at the December amount, it was seventy-five point nine million. There that we received this year. Property tax does not change significantly. You get a slight increase in assessed value. Each year, not a decrease.
Right, but you're assuming that people will be able to pay their property taxes, let alone their, their mortgages, right?
Correct. There is, the county does participate in what's called a teeter program. Where from the county treasury, they do make us whole, even if the cash is sort of in arrears there for some of those delinquents.
But in the end, it's still another prediction, an assumption you're building in, correct?
Correct. And so we build, we get updates from the county and as they give us updates, we adjust this cash flow. That's why we're going to bring it to the board monthly. We're going to share it with our financial partners and the county office. And we're going to address every time we get a new prediction or a new change or a new promise. We will adjust and then come to the board with what action we need to take.
Okay, take me now to just some final questions on the solution on the cash flow issue, the step approach. You're talking about the slide that talks about first going to county, then going to trans.
Slide twenty-seven, or no, slide twenty-five. Yeah.
Okay. The, the temporary interfund borrowing is basically money that we have in hand. But are budgeted in different line items that we want to be able to do interfund adjustments to be able to cover. Other holes in our budget, correct?
Correct. And we have twenty million dollars that we can utilize for that, so fifteen million dollars, not including fund seventeen of flexibility.
So that's borrowing from ourselves, but not necessarily borrowing money we don't have.
Correct. It's money in the bank.
Okay. What happens when we borrow it and you, are you saying based on the assumption that we're going to get the money back in December? We'll go back to those numbers again on what we borrowed from the line items that were flush?
Yes, it gets restored directly to the fund that it was borrowed from.
Okay, my second thing is if, if, and that's only going to give us twenty million. If for some reason September comes and it's really bad and it's cash flow becomes an issue beyond twenty million, then you say. We would go to the county and borrow from the county. Is that correct?
Correct. We would go to the county treasurer and it's a much lower basis point. The ratings aren't involved. It's a fairly simple process to get that approval and do that application.
And this is where I want to talk about the slide where you talked about paying the county back. The deadline for this application had run before the current cash situation became clear. What does that mean? Did we miss the deadline to do that?
This was for June. When we initially began doing this, we thought we might need cash this June. And the deadline was April thirtieth. We didn't have the analysis at that point, but for next year, we have not missed a deadline.
So when are those dollars due to the county if we go that second step there? What do they do back to them?
Because we're actually borrowing from the fund that the county receives state aid in. It just automatically gets taken the second the next state apportionment comes in. So it's, it's almost because the county is our bank, we're borrowing from our bank.
So the county ends up holding the deficit until state comes back and fills the coffers again.
Yes.
For an indefinite amount of time?
Um, I, Graham, I'm not sure if you know the timeline, but I know it's several months.
I'm mostly concerned about when the county, you know, with trustee Phillips suggestion, I agree. If we plan for a worst case scenario. My worst case scenario is I do these short-term cash flow loans. And then we still end up holding debt because we didn't get those assumptions to come through with the state just says, sorry, guys, sorry. Uh, so I'm just wondering then what the pain would be felt on our end to pay these things back.
So it would be the basis points that we're paying. I'll get back to you on the exact timeline of return. Usually the way it plays out. Is the money is taken from the next apportionment. So then that loan is paid back and if that keeps you still short, then you do another new loan for a month and you keep doing it. You keep borrowing, unborrowing, borrowing and borrowing.
That sounds like payday loan industry to me as far as I'm concerned, but that's another story.
That's, that's the issue with state deferrals. They put a burden on school districts and it does cost us a cost of borrowing.
Okay, so then the next step would be if we needed even more because we ran out from what the county can cover with our cash flow. Then we're going to go externally to bonds and sell bonds, correct?
So that's the tran.
That's the tran.
And that takes a much larger process. The reality is if we stay within the county. We should not have to go to a trans. The only reason we would have to go to a trans. Is if the county started running into trouble too. And then we would probably all be running to that pool trans anyways. So the odds are we won't have to do a trans. I've only been in one district that's had to do them. Back in nine, Orange County did not allow county treasury borrowing. They changed that because remember Orange County had their own bankruptcy problem.
Yeah.
There, but now Contra Costa County and Melituba Counties do allow borrowing from the county treasury.
Okay, so then. Are you going to seek a resolution, which you're seeking at our next regular meeting? You said basically permission from the board to pursue any one of these steps?
No, only interfund borrowing. If we believe we have to go to the next step. I would come back to the board for a formal resolution for that specific action. Because I believe that getting permission to do any of this would not be, would not be appropriate in transparency to the community or to the board. We need to be able to come back and have the conversation in an open session to go forward. So no, the only thing I'd be asking for is borrowing from ourselves. At this point.
Do you know how much that interfund borrowing would be for already?
Um, at this point, worst case in July, we would have to borrow seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars on paper for July at this point. Um, at this point, worst case in July, we would have to borrow $799,000 on paper for July at this point. Based on our negatives on the 2021 fiscal cash flow. So you can see our projections each month, what we might have to do each month. And then it's paid back the next month and then you borrow again, you go back and forth. So it's an accounting ledger issue, it's not even an actual loan.
I'm just going to make some quick comments, those are my questions, but just a quick comments about things other people brought up. One, I do think it's a little premature to give people hope around schools and communities first and parcel tax. That's going to be a blessing if it happens, but that's going to be up to voters to decide. So it's a, we'll see in the age of COVID-19 recovery what that means. The second thing, I mean, we can still, we'll have a discussion about whether we would pursue that parcel as a district. But the other thing that I think there's a little bit of false hope is this notion of there's one political party in legislative, federal legislative, one legislative branch that is pushing for, what was it, a trillion dollar bailout for states and municipalities. And then you have a executive leader who just issued a statement today from another political party who said that's dead on arrival. So I do think that it's about advocacy for sure. That's why I'm mentioning this at the federal, the state and federal level. But when we have to as local elected solve the problems, the problems, this is why it always falls at your feet. That's why people, you know, they always say being a local elected, that's the hardest type of be, of elected because you actually have to solve everything that trickles down to you. We still have to solve paying people, but we don't generate and have to decide on overall state and federal budgets. So that's going to be the challenge for us. And I think that's why we do need to monitor very closely. Uh, because you, as Christine Phillips said, we don't want to be a doom. We want to talk about hope, but we want to talk about hopeful optimism that is taking into consideration what is possible and everything that's possible. And there is a reality that any point along the way, uh, the implications of what the impact on the economy are uh, for all those things that we don't control, but yet we have to solve the, um, keeping our schools open can fall out the bottom. So I just want to make sure that we know that, that we keep that in mind. Um, we still have to solve the problem and I hope that folks out there in our public recognize uh, that, that, that this is a fine, um, level of accountability that we're trying to maintain. Oversight and accountability, imagine oversight and accountability when you have a moving target and five different moving targets and assumptions. Uh, which is why I agree, I think we need to be very conservative right now. Now, the problem with that conservativeness is it's going to cause pain. And it's going to continue to cause pain on top of pain that people are already experiencing. But those are our challenges. So everybody who wants to run for school board, this is what it's about, this is what you're signing up for. Uh, it's not always about some of the smaller micro things. Um, it's about all of it. And so I appreciate your time with this and I hope the board, and that's why I thought it was absolutely important that we have a separate meeting to discuss this and let the full board answer their, ask their questions. Not only that, but in particular, we actually have, uh, which I think it's interesting. People are pointing out government ed code 3514.5. I would actually also encourage folks to look at board bylaw 9322, which talks about how that ed code, um, uh, code provision is worked into our board bylaws around how we actually agendize and actually how we look at all these issues and what our expectations are. And as you scroll further down in that, it says, um, one, all public communications with the board are subject to requirements of relevant board policies and administrative regulations. And when you scroll down even more, uh, in accordance, uh, where is it? It says if we're going to borrow more than $100,000, let me find it. Um, that we must have a separate budget, we must have a separate agenda item on it. Uh, but not just that, but we have to take time to inform and to consider and deliberate on it. And I think that's why it's important Superintendent and Dr. Wold that you give this board, not just for this board's sake, but for the community's sake, enough time for these kinds of discussions and decisions around, I just described, the very, a very tight, um, exercise we're doing. Where every step could be a misstep that hurts us later. So please, 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 agendize things well in advance for lots of discussion. Because at the end of the day, we're being asked to really predict.
Trustee Cuevas, I can't hear you anymore, I don't think we can hear you. Trustee Cuevas, do you mind repeating the last part? We couldn't hear the very last, last thing you said.
Well, the last thing I said is please, 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 Dr. Wold, do what you can, if you guys hear this part, to agendize these discussions uh, well in advance of having to take a vote the first time the board and the public have to hear it. Um, not only because I think it's important because it's actually in our board bylaw. Um, I actually think it's when we, um, "Any board action that involves borrowing 100,000 or more shall be discussed, considered, and deliberated upon as a separate item of business on the meeting agenda." So we know that it's being called out for a specific reason. It might in fact meet the requirement for you to just bring us stuff and us talk in that moment. But I'm, just for example, my final comment was this is a very, very tight deliberation where one misstep can push this district into bankruptcy. And not because of our own reasons. We've already demonstrated as a board and as a community that we're willing to work together to solve our budget issues. And so I hope that you will bring and make considerable time for any of the follow-up that you're talking about, the month by month that we'll ask for those things, that we have enough time to have a discussion and then action. That's my final comment, thank you, Dr. Wold, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Cuevas, and I completely agree with that, the fact that the board needs to have enough time to really discuss and make decisions that are super informed and well thought out, um, well in advance. Thank you, Trustee Cuevas again, and Trustee Bonas.
Thank you, Trustee Dennis Jarvis. And I'd like to start by thanking Trustee Cuevas for, at our last meeting, saying we need to have this conversation, just saying it now again, because this has been so helpful for us and for the community. I have some questions I wanted to ask, um, on page two of the presentation. We talked about our schedule and it says budget adoption on June 10th. And we have always had a budget hearing at the first meeting in June and a budget adoption at the second meeting in June. And maybe that's changing, but I mean, I think there should be time for the community to come and see the full budget, the full document, the state forms, for those who want to look at them and see that. And for example, I'm sure we'll get questions from the AASAT. We heard from Ms. Shields tonight, we heard from Ms. Smith last week. A lot of questions that will relate directly to the budget. So, um, I, I guess if I had a chance to vote, I'd say we should have a budget hearing the first part of June and a budget adoption the second part of June. Um, on slide 16, where you mentioned that, uh, of course, we're having a lot of extra costs due to our shutdown. I'm wondering, I mean, we talked about the CARES Act earlier. Do we think that the money we're getting from that pretty, pretty well matches our expenses? Or do we have an additional unexpected expenses, expenses we didn't, we hadn't been planning on obviously, that aren't covered by the CARES Act?
So we're, we're still trying to quantify that. A lot of it is quantifying what we'll need in additional technology. At this point, we do believe that we may be able to have everything balanced out. One area that we're still getting questions on is exactly how much the federal government is going to reimburse us for the meals that we're serving. We're told that we're going to be reimbursed fully, but until we actually see those apportionments come through, because we're operating in a different type of model, we have to assume, and other districts are assuming that we're not going to get full reimbursements. And so based on that, we're holding some of those dollars to protect us against that expense. We don't know what type of, um, additional pieces may be required as we're talking about lost learning in pieces. But the hope is that yes, it will cover any of those additional expenses there and possibly even be able to mitigate against some new expenses that might fall into the next year.
Okay, thank you. Um, we, we mentioned both parcel tax in schools and community first. Um, obviously the amount we get from schools and community first will depend on how the economy is, even though it's not based on income tax. It'll depend on how the economy is going. Do we have any estimates for the revenue on most side and high side? If we're fortunate enough to have that pass that we would be getting?
So the previous estimate, um, talking with UTR and our partners, was potentially $18 million from schools and communities first as a high end. So indeed, if the economy was a little contracted, maybe that drops to 15 million, but same concept because it's based on assessed value, that is pretty stable. So the 18 million is probably a fairly good number for schools and communities first.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, I've got on slide 19. So I'm wondering why, uh, when I look at the 2018, 19 ending balance, it's not the same as the 2019, 2020 starting balance. And it's actually, it's less than the amount of our audit adjustments. So I'm wondering, what is that?
So let me pull that slide up again. Um, this is our unrestricted only, restricted is not included in this. So when you look at our combined balances, there you don't see any of our restricted Title I, other things in there.
So then, hang on, Dr. Wold, hold on. But no, all I'm asking is like, why is the 38 million at the bottom of the 2018, 19 column at the top not equal to the beginning column on the next line? Because it does in the other, like it.
Yes, sorry, that is the audit adjustment. If you remember in the annual audit, we had a record.
Our audit adjustment was like 5.4 million and this is 4.2 million or 4.2. This is not, this is not the amount of the audit adjustment.
I will go back and give you a definitive answer why the number changed.
Okay. Um, we talked about, uh, perhaps spending down below the 3% required reserves. I'm trying to understand why even, why, if, when I look at the components of ending fund balance, the bottom half of that page, um, in the first two columns, they add up to the 38 million and the 19 million. The second two columns do not add up to the 7 million and the minus 29 million. And I'm wondering what's going on there, like it's not even in the same order or magnitude in the case of the last column.
So those are the amounts that we're short to get our minimum 3%.
So the deficit, but, but I'm trying to make the numbers on the bottom add up to what they should, which is the ending balance at the top.
So the ending balance is 7,830,000. The reality is of that, 300,000 is truly stores and revolving cash, which is a book entry. So if we were to really look at it the way it should be, you would have 7,530 in the Fund 17, the 300,000, the 230 and the 70,000. And then the minus 7 million is what is necessary to get us back to the $14 million ending fund balance, 14 million.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wold. Let's look at the next column, it's a better example. I mean, we're talking 14 million versus 29 million and I don't understand why that's not even adding up to be something close.
Well, the reality is in that case, we need to have 14 million in our 3%. But as you can see, if we're minus 29 million, not only would we not have the 3%, we would actually be in debt 15 million additional. We would be negative without intervention there. And that's why we have to cut the 26 million. Once that's cut, that changes all those numbers. So that's why the target of 26 million that we have to identify cuts next year is necessary.
So let's talk about the cash flows, that's, uh, page 23 and 24, I think. Um, so to say, once again, last week, we were thinking we might need a tran. Now we don't, what are the two largest items that came through or you were able to realize? That led you to conclude that we didn't need a tran?
So if you'll go to the slide that is 2020 cash flow and you'll look up on the principal apportionment, we did not have the 38 million fully booked even last week. It hadn't been reconciled completely. In addition, you will see a major change in May of 14,585. That is the OPEV transfer, that had not been addressed. So the expense had been taken out of our cash flow, but the transfer that paid that bill this year had not been booked into our cash flow. So when you see that major change in May, that's a big swing as you look at cash. That changed us significantly because that wasn't built into any of our cash flow assessors. Because until the cash is built into the bank, you don't put it in. So we've been paying it all year and now it's been paid for by the trust with cash coming in this month.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm looking at the fiscal 2021 cash flow. I, I have to say I'm having serious doubts about this because I noticed that the asset and liability transactions that are presented for August, September, October, November, December, February, March and June of FY 2021 are identical to the numbers from the previous year. And when I go back and look at the first interim, sorry, not the first interim, the second interim from January 31, 2019, I don't see a particularly close correspondence between the transactions in the asset and liability categories by month there. And I just like, it's just making me feel really queasy about this. And then also I noticed that there are no changes at all in assets listed for May next year and there's no changes in liabilities for January or May of next year. To me, this just doesn't seem plausible. I just, I'm feeling really nervous about the numbers I'm seeing here because they just look like they were cut and pasted from the previous year, which apparently they have been done with like, sort of no attempt at all to adjust for anything we can, we can predict. And also I want to say like, when I look at our $34 million in June in cash next year, we're $20 million off better than we are this year. And I, I, I would love your thoughts about why even after we've had a big, we'll have a big deficit next year, we're going to be so flush in cash so much better than this year. We show $34 million there for June of 2021.
So you, you bring up several really good points. The first thing is we don't have a full apportionment schedule yet. That's one of the things we're working with the county to determine because it is a cut and paste. Until you have that schedule, you know approximately what your anticipated property tax will be. So you assume the bulk of it will come in December and it'll follow the same model. So that's why it is initially a cut and paste. Indeed, if they start slowing down things, that's going to change. And that's where the teeter program plays in and some of those other pieces. So I would agree with you that I suspect that June will not be as rosy as it is. I suspect you're going to see multiple deferrals and why we're going to need to monitor cash on a monthly basis as we go forward. Because what's going to happen is we're going to see two different numbers change. The number that comes in, in that other current assets, the 9340, 9499, as we get more information from the county on when they're going to pay the cash, that will change those. But more importantly, those numbers on that top line of principal apportionment. I think what you're going to start seeing is that the numbers are going to start moving to the right. You're going to start seeing zeros or smaller numbers and you're going to start seeing numbers move to the right. That will change each time a number moves, it changes every subsequent month after that. And that's why this is just a first starting point from a budgetary standpoint. Do we, if everything stayed the way it's supposed to, do we have enough cash? The answer is yes, we can manage. As things change, as Trustee Cuevas said, we come back to the board immediately. Okay, this now is our new assumption, we now have this information. We now have this information. We have changed and I'll come back and say, today we have changed August and September. This is the effect now or what do we do next? And each month as we get better assumptions and we know what both the state and county are going to do, we're at their control. It's not the other way around. We would then adjust this, but this is our best understanding as of today.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I'm looking on slide twenty six of the presentation. I'm curious, you know, we talked about borrowing from fund twenty five and fund forty. I'm wondering if we have any significant plans for use of those funds in our construction program or anything else that, or if we're going to have to like stop doing certain facilities programs. I don't know if Mr. Freeze wants to comment on that or if we have any kind of a projection about how we're planning on using that money over what timeframe we're using that money.
Um, I know that we are not doing a significant amount in forty. That number has been pretty static for multiple years. We do small little projects. Louis, are you available for fund twenty five?
I am. And at this point, fund twenty five, while we have projects lined up, it wouldn't be to that magnitude. We're currently looking at the projects probably in around the three million dollar magnitude.
Okay, thank you. So if that's three million dollars, it might, it might cut our, and if we spent that, if we didn't defer it, that might cut our borrowing ability by two million dollars then. Okay, um, let's see. Uh, this might be a question for Mr. Beam on page twenty seven where we're talking about federal tax law. Just if we went out today with bonds, are you able to give us a wild guess? Let's say trans, let's say ten million dollars in trans. What the interest rate spread would be between trans that are federally tax exempt and transit or federally taxed taxable?
All right, had to get off mute there. Um, yeah, I mean, a one year rate for a tax exempt is going to be, you know, maybe a hundred and twenty basis points, one point two percent. Whereas taxable, you're probably looking at a spread of, you know, anywhere from twenty to thirty five basis points for the, for the taxable. I don't know, you know, for, for West Country custa, you know, for to go out for a TRAN, you know, it would be borrowed as a, as a tax exempt.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, Dr. World, I'm, I'm looking at the timeline here for how long it takes to issue a trans. It's not like anything I didn't expect. Do you see a reasonable possibility? We might want to issue a TRAN next year. And if so, is there any, are any, is, can we do some of the steps in advance? So we have fewer steps to do if we realize we need it?
So the, the answer is we can certainly start the process if we feel that we're going to need it. And I would want to actually, if we get, let's say that all of a sudden November looks like it's minus thirty five million, just to give you an example. And we cannot borrow from the county because we're going to ask them first. And they say, no, that's not going to be an option. Then I would want to come to the board in July or August and start that process much earlier. So we can go through that and be prepared. So as we update, once we get all of the information in July, we'll have a much better picture of where the state's going to be probably in the next six weeks on what the state apportionment schedules are going to be. We'll come back. We're going to start by outreach with the county and Bill Clark and his office to see if we can't get in line for already bringing to the board the approval to borrow from the county as necessary, which is the cheapest borrowing so that we can avoid the possibility of having to go for a TRAN. But again, if the cash flow does change, and so what my proposal to the board is that each month I will bring forward a cash flow analysis as a discussion item, just to present in public what has changed that we know so that we're prepared to start taking action as necessary.
Okay, thank you. Um, you noted that you'd be bringing us a resolution next year for some interfund transfers. Have there been no interfund transfers since we did our resolution in January? Or are there some that we need to catch up on with board resolutions?
At this point, I don't believe we did any. We just, nobody kind of looked at them. So I think the county just let it push through and that was, it just wasn't being overseen the way it should have been. So no, we don't have to go retroactively back, but we do need to move forward at this point. And I've checked with the county to see if there's any retroactive. They didn't seem to have any concern. And I checked with other districts. Other districts also had the same issues and nobody was addressed with it. In the last three county CBO meetings, all we've talked about is cash. So the attention has switched completely. And so we're going to be focused. And so next board meeting on the twentieth, I will be asking for a two thousand twenty twenty one resolution for interfund borrowing authorization.
Okay, thank you. Um, so trustee Phillips mentioned his desire, I think well placed to have a budget for a negative COLA. As I recall, the FICMA guidance, it said that we should actually be developing a minimum of three alternative scenarios that take into account different COLAs or anything else that we want to do. Are we going to actually see that?
Yes. So in, we will create a couple extra NYPD's. Once we define what our adopted budget will be, and that'll be based on what the May revision is. We will also have several scenarios that play into more negative than what the May revision states because we believe there will be changes in August or September. And then what we will do is try to hold expenditures so that we are positioned to be able to address anything that comes forward. So the board will see several. I don't know that you'll have them all for the third interim, but you will have them by June tenth.
Okay, fine. Um, so June tenth, he says, do we think that's still going to be the budget adoption or we're going to have a hearing and an adoption?
So the, the rules have changed in the past. It used to always be before LCFF, it was one board meeting, you did the public hearing and the adoption. Now with LCFF, they had changed the rules with LCAP that you do the public hearing and then you come back and do the budget adoption in the second meeting. With LCAP changed, it's reverted back to both on the same meeting. So certainly we can do the public hearing and then bring the budget back on the twenty fourth. The reality is the information that we know won't change between what we're presenting on the tenth and what we're presenting on the twenty fourth, nor will we have all the LCAP finalized. So at this point, the best course of action is just to move forward. And if the board isn't prepared to adopt on the tenth after the public hearing, we can bring it back again on the twenty fourth. But our recommendation would be we do both as the agenda and then we go through the public discussion because the numbers will not change dramatically from what we present in the third interim next week to what we present on the June adoption.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your concern about revenue. Actually, in this case, I'm actually more worried about the expenditure side, AASAT and other things that we should be spending more on. So thank you, Trust President Hernandez Jarvis. That's the end of my questions.
Thank you, trustee Panas. Thank you, trustees, and thank you, Dr. World, for answering all of these questions and providing clear detail. I want to just clarify before I ask a couple of other questions. You'll be bringing a resolution for interfund borrowing to the board on May twentieth, right? That's what I'm understanding. Okay, thank you. And at this moment, you're saying that we're not likely to need a TRAN?
Correct. At this point, based on the analysis that KNN did and the county, based on our current cash flow and the fact that we booked that additional revenue in May, we do not believe we need a TRAN immediately.
Got it. Thank you. And in terms of executive order number fifty six twenty that went into effect in April, I believe it was April twenty third. You know, in our state of California, are we, can you clarify if the LCAP will be on hold until December across all school districts? Or if that was the decision that was made by our district specifically because it needs to be at the county, approved by the county by January fourteenth of next year?
Oh, it's all school districts. We were given that same guidance from the county office that the LCAP, you just do the one paragraph at the station that comes forward in June. But the LCAP itself cannot be addressed due to multiple factors until December. So it's all school districts in California.
Okay, so I got that part. Um, thank you for restating it, but I just want to be clear if all school districts are going to do it until December, if they're going to bring it to their boards in December, or is there a leeway for November? Because I'm thinking about the way that the process works when the board gives feedback and if the community needs to be, get, get feedback once it comes to the board. Is there going to be enough time between December, if it comes during the first or second meeting, to get to the hands of the county by the January fourteen deadline?
That, that's a good point, trustee Hernandez. We can certainly work with the board to bring some information prior to that adoption of the LCAP. And as we build our calendar of events for September, October, November, we're going to have to do multiple budget updates throughout the year anyways with the forty five day revise. So we can build models in where more information is provided prior.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to read part of that executive order number fifty six twenty that waives some other requirements and the LCAP. That way we inform the community and as the board, we're on the same page. You know, we're trying to do our best of managing our budget and making the right decisions while not losing sight of some of the most important work that we're here for and that we need to plan for. I, I want to echo you know about the asset resolution that we passed on January fifteenth. Um, that's a priority that, that we pledge support to and that we also need to focus as we plan for summer and budget for summer school and fall. And we look at all of these priorities. And meeting the immediate needs as well, right, over of all of our students. And as we work to envision what our plan is going to be for the future as well. And so let me read that section. It's section four. And if you, if you just look it up on the website for the California Department of Education or the Office of the Governor, you can find that in section two, one. It talks about the governing board or body of the local, the LEA, the local education agency adopts during the same meeting at which the governing board or body of the LEA adopts the annual budget due July first, two thousand twenty, a written report to the community that explains the changes to program offerings that the LEA has made in response to school closures to address COVID nineteen emergency and the major impacts of such closures on students and families, which shall include at minimum a description of how the LEA is meeting the needs of unduplicated pupils defined consistent with education code section forty two, twenty three, eight point zero two B one during the period of school closures. And the steps taken by the LEA. So it needs to include that information when we, when we, you know, when we publicly adopt our budget. And, and I just want to make sure that we, we keep that in mind. And with, with the LCAP, I brought up that question about the December um, timeline that we're setting because I want to make sure that that's a timeline that's chosen collaboratively, taking all the things that are happening into consideration as well as the wishes of all stakeholders that need to be part of that process. And my, my only concern is that if there's more time needed, if we bring it to the board in December, it's going to really put us in a time crunch. So I want to make sure that, that, that is taken up very seriously so that we have that conversation to see if we can decide on that collaboratively as, as our due date for December, if we can shoot for November. And item number two, section one, in that same order, oh, I'm sorry, I already went over that one. Item number four, um, that, that's what, that's where I got that information from, that the deadline for a county superintendent or the superintendent of public instruction to approve the LCAP is extended until January fourteen, two thousand twenty one. So that's why I wanted to bring this up because I wanted to make sure that we take into consideration all of our budgetary needs and the decisions we need to make at the same time that we don't lose sight of the processes that we have in place and the commitment to our kids and to the long-term planning that we do hope to do. So that once we can have some kind of sense of normalcy, um, you know, that we're, we're aiming for that January fourteenth deadline to have it all set with a plan for next year. And hopefully we can start, you know, with, with planning that is fresher. And I understand at this moment, we need to focus on the immediate needs, but I also want us to keep this in consideration as we move forward with this work. And that is my, that is my final comment. If there is no more discussion by board members, then I think
Madam Chair, can I just add some LCAP comments?
Yes.
Um, I do think it's an interesting discussion for superintendent and Dr. World and the board to consider because, for example, even just with the asset discussion, um, Dr. World, how much of the budget, all of the money we have, how much of it goes directly to salaries?
Ninety percent, just under ninety percent.
Which is basically, uh, doesn't leave much in relation to the notion of a set aside for seven million dollars or, um, a fourteen percent expectation of some folks. So that's why I think there's misfined expectations that the reality is, is that ninety percent, where we have our biggest dollars is where you're going to have to figure out how to meet the needs of all our students and address the concerns that community has to reflect how those dollars in fact total the expected amounts and be able to demonstrate that of what we hope to invest in our students. Because this has always been the issue, in my opinion, as an education advocate, I'm putting on a different hat. That districts across the state, every district has somewhere between, and they say sometimes it's unhealthy, the higher you have, the lower you have. There's all these people who talk about what's the right number, what's the magic number? Anywhere between seventy five and ninety percent of their district funds are tied to people. So unless you're going to cut people, and we've gone through that already, to make room for those dollars to then be applied to some specific kind of programming or new kind of people investment to support students, we have to figure out, which to me is a better proposition, how about we start using that ninety million in reflection of what's needed for the, the students in this district? And that's the alignment that needs to happen because we can't, now with the COVID and the financial instability that you just described, the expectation is not going to go away. But I'm hoping the public will be part of that awareness and discussion. Because we're going to have to figure out how to do this in a different way if we want to create those win wins that we have and we're holding out in our expectations. Um, and I think that's important for everybody to understand. And I'm looking forward to more discussion about it. And it's actually been something that predates any ASAP resolution in terms of the needs of this district. But, um, before the resolution, it's something we just have never figured out appropriately to lead to better outcomes for African American students, English learners. Seventy five percent of our district are either, can be categorized as English learners, low income or foster youth. I don't see seventy five percent of the output of our budget being aligned to those needs. And that could be the challenge through the uncertainty of, again, the moving markets I discussed. So it's going to be incumbent upon, I think, all of us to continue to be in conversation and, and be frank with what we can talk about. But to do it together with a sense of awareness that we all have the same set of information. So thank you again, board president, for raising the issue of the LCAP. It's going to be something that I think may with.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Trustee Phillips?
So thank you for the additional comments about the ASAP resolution. I want to talk about something a little different, though. I want to talk about the return or the eventual return to school. Um, in order for
Trustee Phillips, we lost you. We cannot hear your audio. Would you mind turning off your mic and turning it up again? We still can't hear you.
Okay, okay, there we go. I was on roll. But what I want to talk about is going back to school, but going back to school in the sense of the buildings being open, okay? In order for us to do that, we're going to have to make some very serious changes to do that safely. And that is going to be expensive. Now, I don't know when we're going to be able to go back. Uh, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a scientist. But I know at some point we will. But I know at some point we will. And we also need to be talking with our county health officials. We need to be talking with our bargaining units, meaning our unions. And we need to be figuring out right now what it is going to take for us to get back into those classrooms. What we're going to need and we're going to have to call that out. So, and it's not going to be inexpensive. So we need Mr. Duffy, Dr. Wold. I know you got the rest of your team or your financial team on the line. But that's something you guys need to start working on because that is something that you're going to have to figure into the budget. That is going to have to be included in this budget that is going to come to the board in June. Because that money is going to be spent next school year. So I know that now, probably you guys have been working on this already. So I'm not, you know, going to say that you're not doing anything or not doing that. But that's going to have to come to the board. It's going to have to come to the board pretty quick because you have to budget for it.
Hi, trustee Phillips, thank you for that comment. That's actually a conversation that we're having, you know, as the agenda setting team about bringing forth information about summer planning and then fall planning as well. And I know there's a lot of variables in this work, but I know that that's something that board members in the community have been wanting to have more transparent information on. And Mr. Duffy, you know, did acknowledge that we're going to have more communication on this and, and I look forward to bringing that as an item to the board.
Okay, and, and for informational purposes, but I'm also talking about budgetary. It has to be included in the budget.
Totally, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, trustees. It looks like everybody wrapped up their comments. I really value your input and Dr. Wold and everybody who presented. Thank you for being here today to give us a clearer picture of where we stand with our budget and with our projections. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Thank you, everybody. And that is our final discussion item, our only discussion item today. So we are going to adjourn our special meeting on May 13, 2020 at 9:25. Thank you to members of the public present as well. Thank you. Have a good evening and be safe. Bye.